Everybody has new microphones. Buttons.
I was talking with you.
And every, so we are going live.
And the sound picks up everybody speaking. All right. Good morning. Welcome to the April tenth meeting of Board Riley County Commissioners. Please stand and join the pledging.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know this slide, this one was over a little bit than what it used to be, and I don't know if that's why it's.
Swivel. No.
They messed up your bad. That's irritating. Cause then you can never get it right.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's it's all. I'm worried about my chair.
My chair too.
You know, I was speaking of swivel. I was just learning the other day that it was Thomas Jefferson. The reason why we have swivel chairs.
I invented that.
Really? Yeah, he invented a spring while he was in the White House to have to move around because he did all of his work alone mostly at night. So. But they got a way to get them to move around. Yeah, they put a spring in their old school chairs.
And really historical fact that didn't.
I don't know if you're afraid of that or not. Might have been more important than even the Louisiana Purchase.
Okay.
That's your history lesson.
After our history lesson, does anyone have public comments? If not, you can continue.
This will be about history. So we're good. Monday afternoon post meeting, I met with Riley County Planning and Special Projects Director Amanda Webb. With work on the comprehensive plan, strategic planning, as well as the changes to the rural economic development advisory board. I wanted to touch bases and just. See how things are going overall. Sounds good at this point. Really does. Really looking forward to seeing what that comprehensive plan is going to look like when we. Kind of get done with it towards, you know, the heavy looks coming. So. Really going to be excited to see what that looks like when we get to the end of that here in the fall. So. Wednesday morning, yesterday morning, I was on Within Reason with Mike Madison on A Man Radio. Also on YouTube livestream and various podcasts over the internet. He sent me a list of topics that we were going to discuss and I'm like, really? In an hour? We're going to get through that in an hour? Much to his credit, we did. So was kind of surprised by that. So. Speaking of those topics. We talked about the Harmony Road Fire that happened, obviously, on Monday. The new EMS headquarters and emergency management services in general. Our work on a comprehensive plan is noted. And what that will mean moving forward. Trump administration cuts and the impact locally. Housing in particular, our favorite subject, H I D. And lastly, the upcoming Kansas County Commissioners Association Conference, but. We get to host this year. I'm very excited about that. Gee, I'll talk about that in more detail here in just a minute. So. And some other questions and key things that came up along the way. So. Like I said, unbelievably, we were able to get through that not really an hour. If you think about it, it's forty five minutes. When you think about the commercials, advertisements, everything else that goes along with that. So I'm really surprised. So. I told him in a text back that I could actually go on probably half a morning on all these subjects, but. We did more of a high level, not, yeah, yeah, not a dive on that. So it worked out pretty well. Also, yesterday I was part of the April National Steering Committee Call with NACO's Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee. Which I sat on after some opening remarks and introductions from our Chair Angela Connie. She's a Commissioner from Hennepin County, Minnesota. Case you wonder where Hennepin County, Minnesota is, that's the Greater St. Paul area. So kind of Minneapolis, St. Paul, Queen Cities. Yadda, yadda, yadda. Still not as cool as Clackamas.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Yeah, you know, ironically, I actually met and talked to her when I was in DC in March and I said. We got a kick out of that. She said, well, if you get a kick out of the name, you should actually come and hang out. That was a good boy. So, you know. She knows her work there. So anyway, we heard from Jen Tolino, Director of Local Practice. Results for America. It's a private group. And then. I'm probably going to chop this name up, but Lestah Goldston, she's the Senior Program Manager for Economic Mobility for NACO. They discussed the NACO RFA Virtual Technology Assistance and Sprint Opportunity. Kind of still a work in progress. How local governments, particularly county governments, can kind of better budget with the resources that they have. Going to look into that a little bit more. We'll probably talk about that. I don't know if I'm going to sign this up just yet for that. There's no fees or anything for that, but. Just kind of curious to see what some other counties are doing and best practices, that sort of thing. Next, we heard from Francis Torres. He's the Associate Director for Housing and from the Bipartisan Policy Center. He discussed the Presidential Executive Order dismantling the USICH. And I cannot remember what that acronym actually is. So please don't ask at the moment, or I'll be glad to try to figure that out. Different aspects that's pertaining to the Department of Housing and Urban Development currently. And then after that conversation, we heard from Josh Brandon. He's the Policy Director from the N A C C E D. Talked about the upcoming Community Development Week. It always takes place at the end of April. We take, we do a proclamation for that every year. So good to go on that. In particular, we talked about CDBG funding and the positive impacts that has on local communities. And then a very last thing we talked about was a legislative update in Capitol Hill with Kevin Cook, who's our Legislative Assistant with the Committee. Probably don't need to go into real detail there to. Find how chaotic things are. Wednesday evening, there was an April Business After Hours sponsored by Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce out of the new. Say new Victory Clinic. I guess they've been open for almost a year now. It's out on Vanessa Drive, kind of tucked in there in the. Corner there, just kind of north and west of the Chicago Grill. Very interesting, to be honest with you. They specialize in two proven options for treatment resistance for depression. So non, non medicine. So they do some other different things there, which I thought was kind of cool. And they have some other various services as well for that. Then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, I mentioned on the radio. Yesterday for Kansas County Commissioners Association's Annual Conference, taking place right here in Manhattan, April twenty first and twenty third. At the Hilton Garden Inn, decided to be able to host this. I've been. I've been begging for about three years to get this year. So it's finally here.
An agenda?
We do, and that's what I was going to mention. It's the written agenda posted. Should have gotten an email about it. If not, I can, I can send it over. Yeah, okay, that works. And then registration is open to participate. If you want to be a vendor. If you just really just want to hang out and see it for yourself, I encourage that. I don't expect that, but. Long story short, but anyway, it's on the Kansas Association of Counties website, but I have it. I'll send it over to Rich. Make sure you guys get it. I know you're giving on the agenda some opening introductions. Our opening ceremonies on Friday night will be over at the Discovery Center. I'll try to see if I can get a group of people that actually want to come and maybe tour some kind of facilities here, including the border line. Just see. Yeah, better make it fun. Now that we have all the new technology. Give them some ideas. Nonetheless, that's all I've got this morning, so.
I got real busy yesterday and didn't get a chance to type everything out. So I've got written notes here. Tuesday, went over to the hospital to get my annual infusion shot that helps build bone density, which I've been having every year. Good level. That afternoon, I stopped by Health Department to visit with Diane Creek on the upcoming baby shower. And I had some suggestions on the signage that was on consideration for yard signs, that kind of thing. And it's. We talked about that. So I know we've got it, what they came up with today, but there are some things I. Made a little, little better. Wednesday, went over and met with Scott Booth over at Be Able. You know, I'm, we've discussed their upcoming request for an appropriation from the county. But I'd been there before, but I hadn't been there since they've done a lot of upgrades. And we had a long talk. It was good. He's really easy to talk to. I suggest go and go and see him and take a look. He took me on a tour and they have added showers and laundry facilities and. A place where people can get clean clothes and they've also purchased two buildings on the other side of the street that they're turning into housing for people. Where they work with people to get into, into some, some decent, you know, some, some off the street housing. And I'm meaning, you know, when people live on the street and have to, and it's really hard for people to. Get their lives together when they don't have a place to stay. So it's like, they're really working on it. They've got two buildings. One of them is going to be, I think he said, April twenty sixth, they're going to have an open house on the first building that they've done. And then they have a single family home that they're going to bring to like units for some apartment units for people. And then I guess that reliable transfer building is going to be for sale. So they're thinking about. So I mean, they think about it, that would be, you know, a logical place for them. But, you know, they have the two buildings now and they've got like an open court. Court area with basketball courts and people can kind of hang around and, and they've also got a big garden area back there. They're going to be growing vegetables and. Things. So it's really.
They're coordinating with the emergency shelter.
Yeah, they are. Yeah. And so they've got people from the community that want to come in and plant things and. So that, that took some time. And then yesterday evening, went to my belt practice. And then went to services last night and that was about it for me.
Well, Tuesday was Flint Hills Veterans Coalition Meeting. Just getting started back up. They. Take a break for the first few months of the year. Start working on the plans for the Veterans Day Parade, which costs about nine thousand dollars. There's a lot of stuff involved that they didn't realize. And the cities had a representative there. They're working on new rules for parades. They're going to have some. New rules on what can and can't done on parades and. And how to block the streets and different things. So they said they're still working on it. So.
Are you guys still do the barricades?
And that's all I had. Oh, no, then, okay, Friday. Kimmy and met with Anna person discussing some things about appraisals. Have questions over time, so I make a list, you know, instead of hitting them every time. Not bug them too many times. And then after that, I met with Shiloh and some stuff about. Preacher and some of those and some forms we've gotten that I didn't, she had to explain the things to me, a few things that I misunderstood, which I. I assumed I was wrong, but I did. And then I met with Edge and said, wait, I found a veggie item and some personnel issues and that's all I've got.
Have you had ready for business commissioners?
Yeah.
First, I'm having a motion to approve letter of support for Board of Clay County Commissioners requesting to share.
Is this the same as last year?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I thought it was.
You still have to take this letter of support and actually take it to the Clay County Commission?
Yes, so we can, of course, still have our number to go over. So Megan and I are going to go over Monday morning and talk with them, but they. They knew it was coming. They're very aware and we've been in communications with them since last year, you know, about the progress. Megan is also going to start giving like updates to them as well, similar to how she does to all of you. And so. It, it's very similar. She has a really good relationship with them and I think they're, they're very willing to help out with that cost. They were like, oh yeah, no big deal. You know, so that, that was our conversation last year.
The same dollar amount as last year too. Everything is the same as last year's letter except for the date.
The dates right for sure.
Yeah.
They are very open last year perceptive. It's been a good working relationship.
Let me do it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Make a motion to approve signing the letter of support from Clay County for services. Sharon funding for our.
Community corrections.
A second.
Been moved in second to approve signing letter of support to Clay County for a community correction services on favor.
All three please sign.
I was having a senior moment.
I added that to motion here so you know for community corrections, because I think it does help clarify it. Said Sharon funding, but it didn't say what. I know the letter made it clear, but.
Be surprised. A lot of people don't know that that's based off the judicial districts and not just a county.
Yeah, this is what the second year.
Second year.
Funding from Clay County.
And she just went to them also, you know, requesting opioid funding. And so we have, she has a really good working relationship with them. So.
Can't imagine why.
Next commissioners at Riley County Employee Action Forum for Andrea or Ilana. DEZ Coordinator Health Department Separation of Service, all three please sign. Smoke has been playing with mine.
That's something that we're going to continue with?
So that's the. No, no, I just, I forget.
That's why she's here.
So that's the drug.
Yeah.
The drug endangered children of Kansas position. And if, if Brittany and I are actually looking at it because it was originally funded through December thirtieth. And then there were some changes that made it funded through June thirtieth. And so Shanika and Brittany were having a conversation this week, but. This, this person is not able to work until the end of May potentially. And so that, there was a reason to separate. So. I guess I don't have an answer to that question. If it's through the thirtieth, I think the Health Department of December, they think the Health Department wants to continue. If it's through the thirty of the May, it doesn't. Makes sense to bring anybody back.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Next commissioners, we have the Joint City County Meeting and topic there. Want to add anything else? Are you okay with that?
We're going to have one in the future, but I don't think it's going to be, I don't think I'm ready to do it.
Election or the.
No, I.
Law board offices.
No, I want to come back and discuss the city's housing study.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sounds good.
Been enough research yet to rather give a good presentation. So it'll probably be. Guess we're in April, so might be May.
Good deal. So we have the intergovernmental luncheon as well. Commissioners, one solid topic, one that's still not confirmed. Did you want anything else with that? All three commissioners going to attend? Right?
Yes. Breakup?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah. Well, he likes the food.
Really?
Inter, intergovernmental?
Yeah.
Yeah. I like the food too. I mean, you're doing good.
How are the minutes commissioners?
I didn't see anything on the minutes. Motion. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the minutes as written from the April seventh meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
Or been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April seventh meeting on favor.
Our attentive agendas commissioners?
This one about gave me a heart attack. What, when I saw the special meeting on. Good offense for you. I'm used to them by now, so we're good.
Good. Any items for next week's press conference? Good. Next, you have Mr. Park at nine o'clock.
You know, we, hopefully we won't ever have to go back to that pond. You want to go out there and go for a swim? This time I'll swim across or go around.
Oh, okay. I'm going to call for review. I'm going to.
I went to Schwartz Coensy one where we all had to cross Fancy Creek and none of us had boots on and go up a hill after that. Commissioners and Stan Morgan, County Counselor and.
Yeah, I think it's like five a buck.
Well, like last year was like a hundred and three degrees, so a swim would have been good.
Also had a county commissioner fall out of a back truck on one. Russ Frye, and he was a big man. Good thing he was a big, solid old farm boy because he was old, but he just bounced right up.
Got a picture of that. That wasn't very good either.
You might regret it.
Yeah.
Usually my chair, it was messed with a little bit by Master Chilt stuff. Usually whoever, whoever it is.
Whoever it was in this seat on Monday must have fucked mine. All good.
Tip forward. Yeah, that's usually.
Maybe it was John that messed with all of our chairs.
I didn't.
I guess when we leave, we have to put a note on your chairs.
But now, if you think about it, that might be, that might be entertaining. I don't know.
There you go.
That's why I put my card on the back because there are a couple of times they mixed them up. I want my chair. Okay, let's. That's different. That camera up there, isn't it?
There's one over here next to that.
What, what is that? A speaker below it or what is that? The, the plot, that flat thing. What is that?
Supposedly on livestream, which I'm going to go back and look at when I get home.
Yeah.
Supposed to pick up everything that's on TV, which we've not been able to do over the last. Almost five years.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Well, I know this guy is very clear. Yeah, even if you whisper, it's going to pick you up.
Yeah, copy that.
Back at F L, my dad was city attorney down there. We tracked what year it was from without having to look at the. What date the recording was because we could tell based off the size of his bald spot, right? And we just looked and said, that's oh six. No, that's oh nine. Yep. And we would just, I don't know why they set it up that way. Old guy.
Up until like February or something, YouTube would save all of them. So we, we had the whole series all the way back to. I guess June of twenty twenty when we started the livestream here and now they only do it thirty days.
Really? Oh, wow.
Some days it's good.
Is this the first meeting with those microphones? That's why, that's why the comments were made. Put that together.
How you doing?
Good.
He's trying to figure out the new technology too.
Yeah.
He's right there with you, Rich.
The green lights kind of.
Don't touch it.
The coolest thing is it's right there. It's the stream of microphones that are there that are picking up everything.
Blue lights out. That's one for you.
Do they follow your range?
He said it, it, well, no, oh, the camera.
Yeah, follows your voice, not you personally, but I told Cora, I said, we might add some AI to that. So that might be a possibility.
No. That's that fun.
But don't matter. That thing's listening to you anyway.
Oh, that's true. And yeah. It was real funny over at Be Able. Stephanie works over there. I've known her for years. And we've worked together with the churches. Are you still losing your phone?
She knows you pretty well, doesn't she?
Because I was kind of, okay, what did I do with my phone? Oh, no.
I'm getting to that age too where I lose my phone in my hand.
Oh, I did that yesterday.
There's a blip in the door because I don't like the phone, you know, so I leave it placed.
So you actually want to lose the phone. That's what.
Basically, yeah. Yeah, I think they mess up our lives too much.
I don't argue, don't argue with that at all.
I agree.
We've got to rely on them.
Greg McHenry and I were the last ones to get that one until the commissioner made us.
The thing that bothers me is, you know, you, you know, I've gone a lot of walks. And people are just like, yes, walking.
What gets me is I see couples even, you know, my age and up to your guys' age at dinner at a restaurant and they're both.
Yeah.
And the ladies in the office, I'm going to be in the break room, they'll be in the break room and everyone, I said, you know, you can't get first together.
We are just.
There's two people standing next to each other and they're texting each other.
It's my phone because I want to talk to.
Every now and again, I will actually leave and go to work and will forget my phone. I'm like freaking out and then I'm thinking about it. I'm like. Today's actually going to be a pretty good day.
That's a bad thing though. You get lost many more because that's, I've got so much stuff on it now. That's where my calendar is.
Mine's calendar is the most important part of my phone.
My wife still does the paper.
Yeah.
Schedule and stuff. And I know a lot of people that do, yeah.
I do both just for that reason. If I happen to lose my phone, I'm lost.
I do get my husband up to date on like using our like calendars. And so now like I'll send him invites like, oh, I'm going to be gone this weekend. Justin, no. It's on calendar. They have my dad this week. He's like, look how much this place, easier. My life is, my calendar is right here. And I'm like.
Oh, that reminds, have you sold the station wagon?
Yes.
She hasn't seen what's going to replace it yet, though.
Oh, that's true.
It's a joint project, so I'm, I'm good with what's coming.
You get one of those four door Osmo Bills with the wood grain on it?
No.
Oh, those are cool.
I know.
Yeah.
I grew up with one of those. It's nostalgic.
My first speeding ticket was a nineteen sixty nine Ford Galaxy Station Wagon with blue with wood grain.
Yes.
I was so excited. I got a deer that morning with my bow and I'm so excited going to Elwood Locker Plant.
Did you tell that to the officer?
Oh, yeah, he knew.
But he didn't let you off.
Legal, no.
Oh, man.
Funny thing was, you know, I drove a race in a seventy Chevelle and never got it.
What color was it?
Red with the black stripes. Prime target. So prime target. They like the red, right? One couldn't give me a ticket because he couldn't catch it.
All right. Good, you're on.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Parker, County Counselor. Not too terribly much to report today. Yesterday evening, I attended. The city council meeting for Randolph, which was fun at the request of the mayor, who I ran into a fire district advisory board. Because he has, the city has been, he, I got there early so he could drive me around in the truck and show me that they have. Couple of, of things that would fall under if they were out in the county nuisance, right? They've had a, I think, I think the one that really stuck out was there's an abandoned mobile home that's been there for about, I don't know. Probably since Methuselah was alive. And I think it's owned by a bank supposedly and they keep sending letters to the bank and the bank does nothing. And so they said, maybe they, and I believe they had reached. and the bank does nothing. And so they said, maybe they, and I believe they had reached out to Chairman Kinley about what on earth did, how did Riley help deal with this? And so I had heard from it two different ways. And when I was at Fire District Advisory Board, um, Mayor Zimmer said, would you mind, right, coming up and at least taking a look? And I said, well, I'm happy to do that. And basically, it looks like they may be interested in going down the path that Riley ran. And so I I said, look, I'm not your attorney, but I understand you guys have about a hundred and eighty people and it's pretty expensive to have an attorney on board. So I can, you know, I can help kind of point you to what Riley did. And then the RCPD officer that was up there did an excellent job of explaining some of the practical stuff. And basically, there's a couple of things that cities can do that are built into state statute. And so I'm just gonna shoot over some information to the city clerk. And then they they kind of unanimously voted that they want to look into dealing at least with the trailer. Right. And also got to tell my story about dog at law. I I let him, I let him know as well that, you know, there's at some point, if we ever get um, you know, an understanding of how animal control is gonna go into county, this leads to my next um, discussion point. Uh, that, uh, you know, there may be a unified ordinance that goes to the cities because that makes it easier for RCPD to do their job, um, regardless of who's doing endorsement. And then I got to tell about the city of Bentley, population two fifty, tried to outlaw Buster. The dog, not all dogs at large, just Buster. And that they, and then the, yeah, which is not constitutional.
We did. Conversation about Buster.
We did. We did. So, yeah, so what Bentley wanted to do, and I can say this because everybody now can laugh. It's been over thirty years ago. They said, we want to outlaw a dog at large. And so my dad brought him a dog at large ordinance and said, well, you can't, this just says you can't have your dog run at large. And they said, no, we don't want that. We just want to outlaw one dog, Buster. And so he said, well, I don't think you can do that, right? Last time I checked, you can't, you know, make a law that only applies to one person. And so they said, well, that's unfortunate. And then two months later, um, during police report, the um, the police chief reported a contact incident with the cruiser and an animal died, and that was Buster. And and this is also the place where the town cafe was named the roadkill cafe. So they thought that was, right? They thought that was fun. So anyway, and then that kind of brings me to the other thing that um, Rich and I, and I defer to the on all the finance stuff because I don't know what the number should be, but I know we've talked about reaching back out with Prairie Paws to now that they're not, you know, since we still don't have enforcement altogether figured out, right? To talk about, maybe there's a way to adjust. And so that meeting's been set up, I think, for later today. It's gonna be a Zoom call. And basically, my function is to say hello, right? Here's people that do numbers, right? I don't know what they should be, but it talks about in the agreement that we'll renegotiate if we have lower volume than what we had thought. And so we'll be doing that. And apart from that, from what I think for the first time since I've been here, I can say that um, with maybe one exception, we are completely caught up on on the things that we've had in our department that people have asked us to do. And our turnaround times are now measured in days, sometimes minutes. So we're, that's what the overall goal was for the department and we're trying to keep in good stead. And with that, I'll stand for any questions and point you guys to Jacob, who's the smarter attorney. Right? Do you have any questions? Okay.
Realize you just jinxed yourself.
Oh.
The inter session starts today.
Oh. I don't want to think about that. I forgot. That's not, that's not something I want to think about. Did anyone have any questions?
I was gonna say, just one thing, um, on the fence view, how how do you guys want to uh, do logistics on that? Like, are we all gonna meet here and then get the Riley County vehicles? Do I need to get the vehicle here for you guys to use? How do we wanna? I'll just drive up from my own house. That makes sense. Yeah, you're, yeah, you're pretty close, but as far as.
I expect.
Okay, I I can. It happened last time.
Yeah, I did. But no, I'm just kidding. No, whatever, whatever's effective and efficient.
We we've written up before in county vehicles, but here's probably more comfortable.
Well, I don't.
Yeah, let's all pile in.
Ford or Fords, you know.
Hey.
That's a good thing.
Good thing.
No, actually, it's not. Why I drive a Ram?
Are we gonna meet here then or what?
Yeah, we'll we'll have to meet here first and then open the session.
Yeah, um, we meet here at eight thirty. I think your email said we're gonna meet our leave.
Yeah, eight thirty, thirty minute drive time. Pretty much tunnel all the way up and then um. Yeah, that's true. I ask, yeah.
So. Think about a helicopter?
Sure. Well, I mean, let's just uh, get that in the budget, I guess.
Nope. It's not.
Well, she's not.
Coming from the girl who just went on vacation. So it's day Friday, Monday.
Even Thursday.
Well, regardless, we'll we'll make sure we got ways to move people up uh, up there.
So we need to be here probably by eight fifteen.
Uh, yeah, probably more, I would say more reasonably, yeah, eight fifteen, eight twenty, you know, just so we can get in and get going. You know, and if we're a couple of minutes late, you know, to to that.
If you can look, I don't need to.
All right. Well, I just wanted to bring that up since it's coming up next week.
Yeah, appreciate it. Yeah.
Next, you have Mr. Hanson up at nine twenty.
Sometimes I get my taxes done.
And what's the deal? You know, I was thinking about that. We tell them a story about a guy that I was like, about like, say, he's from Riley. Well, it's, you know, uh, guy who used to work. Chevy, you know, he used to drive his Toyota. And it just drove me nuts. It gave me a hard time. It's a Chevy. I found a guy named Chevy. And he's made my day since then. He now drives a Chevy and he did the rock work on Blake's house. I said, Chevy, I feel so much better. What's the deal with you, Commissioner Ford?
I actually grew up in a Chevy family. Yeah, but you decided to be the black sheep. I know, but on it's a family thing. I don't know. Ask my family. I don't know. They started driving Chevys, but I wanted to be a black sheep, so I didn't want to drive a Chevy like everybody else. I wanted to be better.
I guess to be fair, the the Rams have consistent for the last decade, gotten the highest grades. So I mean, that's, it's probably the smartest decision, but I just defaulted to what was there on the lot. And the guy was easiest to work with, right? It was, yeah.
My last, um, current truck, I guess I should say, was kind of an impulse buy. And I thought, I'm, I know I'm gonna regret this at some point, but I mean, so far I haven't. So maybe that's the way to go too. I don't know. Maybe next time I go with CarMax and they come and pick it up and put it on that vendor thing that they you know, press a button like, you know, you're trying to get a Pepsi out of a vending machine. And start doing that with cars. You should try that, Rich.
My son, my, his last truck online where they just delivered it to the doorstep.
All right.
That's even been a few years ago.
I don't know if I'm really comfortable with that without seeing it and driving it.
Chance to inspect it before you accept it, you know?
That was weird. It's strange.
I think I'd rather buy your station wagon than maybe go on that route. But I guess it's gone, so I can't.
It was gone while I, it left when I start left for vacation. It was a great picture to see.
You take pictures?
My husband sent me pictures. I also saw it on the, we have cameras outside our house. And so I saw it on camera. I was like.
And you didn't cry.
Party.
No, I think that might hurt his ego.
Probably right.
We had a family and playing.
Oh, really?
That was my ancestor.
Oh, really?
We had the plane, that plane, that was amazing.
That's cool.
Well. But they they hadn't. I'll say it. She never was one. It's about the same.
Good morning. How you guys doing?
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, good. Shred for you can.
Be like the next step for onions.
Yeah, best stuff. I don't have anything else hard to do. I gotta wait till nine thirty. I'm petting back this year.
Oh, yeah.
Other stuff I need to get done instead of.
Now garden's work.
Yeah, keeping up with it.
Once the weeds start coming.
Yeah.
Gardening would be fun if it wasn't for the weeds.
I got other stuff I won't need to get done. I'll send the yard this summer. So I'm just gonna do the potatoes, peppers, cucumbers. I got spare cores. Asparagus is more shoots coming out. I see you got two roots. One of them's going great. The other one has one skinny root coming out. The other one's got a nice one going up. But it looked like it kind of spread. I think it kind of spread out. There's more rule.
Yeah, they will. That's the good thing about them.
Do you all hear of that legislation regarding the executive session? Like five-way minute leeway time? Did that get passed?
I have not ever approved it.
I was trying to look, but.
Trying to find stuff on there's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little bit of challenge.
Things get moved around and put on, moved into difference. Tacked on a different bills and.
Yeah, yeah. Now they're gonna take it off and they put it back on and just a mess. Completely clear.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Jake Vance and Deputy County Counselor for Riley County. For you today is uh, a proposed lease amendment uh, with our folks over at Ponty Mental Health Services. Um, this is predicated, of course, on an agreement, lease agreement we entered into with them back in twenty seventeen for ten years. Expires in twenty twenty-seven. So you'll notice this is a little bit ahead of schedule as far as getting in front of you guys. Well, and the purpose of that is the Ponty Mental Health Services um, would like to make uh, significant renovations to uh, the building. And in doing so, and I think rightfully so, uh, they're wanting some, I guess, extension, a term extension so that they can continue to use this property. And that's what this lease amendment is trying to kind of get after. Uh, you'll notice it has, does have an extremely long term limit on it. Um, that was just kind of our baseline, what we started with uh, my practice uh, in government. A hundred year lease isn't necessarily uncommon, but that's entirely up to you guys. If you guys want to tone that down a bit, if you're good with where it's at, it's just kind of more of a starting point. But we believe that the renovations suggested by. Ponti Mental Health Services. Is reasonable. We met, they met with us, Rich and John. We kind of had a discussion on what those look like, and there're not going to be any sort of structural changes to the building itself. And of course, I have the folks here from Ponti Mental Health Services to help answer any questions you guys may have about what those may look like. In the lease amendment itself, we also state that, you know, whatever their plans are, we're gonna look at and approve. When they do those. So we're not quite giving a blank slip to just go do whatever it is that they need to do, but we're acknowledging that these are the things that they would like to get done. We're gonna win in order to accomplish that. So. I believe that surmises really the purpose of the amendment. Any, any questions for me as far as the legal terms?
And you, I don't know whether you know, but Rich knows, how did? It's our building, but it's there. How, I don't remember how that's all set up.
Yeah, it's our building and we pay the insurance on it and everything. But yeah, it was.
But it's there, I mean. Did we pay for the building initially?
Yeah, we did. I've got a copy of the actual original lease and the office there goes all the way back to the early 1980s.
It says we, and also it says a nominal payment. What is it?
Uh, so at this time, I'm. I'm not sure that there's, that we had an initial, there was an initial lump sum payment of a hundred thousand dollars. And then with that consideration, I, I'm not aware that we actually charge. At this.
Used to be a dollar.
Yeah, maybe.
It used to be a.
What it says in the, in the original lease agreement, but. We're not gonna have hardly a dollar.
Yeah, we know what the liability or the insurance or costs are, because that building is getting older, so.
Yeah, that's my, I mean, they're taking care of it now, but then.
Hundred years is ridiculous.
I assume.
I don't think that to you. I have no issues with what you're wanting to do at this. I'm kind of surprised you actually want to keep the building, to be honest with you, but. But a hundred years seems a long time. I mean, the buildings. It's a little over forty right now. It's not even a hundred years old itself.
Makes major renovations in the next hundred years, which I guess we would be responsible for.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are ultimately the owners of the building.
Do we do, we do the maintenance on it now? We already do.
Doing any maintenance on it?
No. We do all the maintenance.
Yeah, that's what I said. Yeah, yeah.
But we do pay the insurance on it.
Right, yes, our building, we, it is on our.
I just, a hundred years, that building can be falling down and it'll be our responsibility to build it back up for it. Like, you know.
Sure. Sure, and that, that we can modify the term. It was something you guys are more.
But I understand they don't want to put this money into it, and then we tell them in two years. And I don't want, and I, that's not my intention.
Right.
But.
I know the, the previous lease agreement was for 10 years. You know, I, I would still have to talk with our, the folks there at Ponti Mental Health Services. What term sounds reasonable to them, but we can review that. Maybe if you guys have a suggestion, we can start on, sure, Rich.
I don't know, another 10 years would, would more than pay for these renovations, I would think.
I was actually thinking more along the lines of maybe 20, 20.
I was saying 10 to 20.
And I agree with the scenario. If you're gonna put major dollars into this, renovate it, use it, you. Need to have it for some point in time, and it's, it's a need. It's absolutely a need, so I'm not concerned with that, but a hundred years. I can't even fathom that, to be honest with you. I don't want it to be somebody else's problem without, without warranting the, the conversation.
And I, I would say that the hundred years is usually when you're dealing with triple net kind of lease where it's like, yeah, you own the property, but the person who's in it is paying literally everything that. Is revolving it. So obviously, that may not be the situation here. So I think that was just an original suggestion by me, not by Ponti Mental Health Services. So again, we can, whatever you guys want to modify that to, I can modify it, go from there, but.
You know, I'm good with 10.
And I, and I guess I'd like to clarify my understanding. Yes, um. I guess, and, and maybe I misunderstood your, what you were saying, but. My understanding is that, yes, the county paid for it, but we paid the county.
Yeah, that's true.
So.
That is true.
So we, you took out a loan on our behalf. And, and so the county paid for it, hence the county owns it. But we turned around and paid the county for it. So it's kind of an interesting little scenario. We didn't have the ability to take out that, those kind of bonds. And we didn't have the money to pay, to buy the building. And, and didn't have the ability to take out those kind of bonds. The county did. And so the county did that for us, but we paid the county. We paid, paid the bill on that.
We paid to pull them out of the loan. Well, that's kind of convoluted then. Why isn't it in your name?
Be, because the county has not chosen to hand it over to us. And, and you know, we've not asked, we've not asked the county to do that.
Stems from back then, they couldn't afford to buy the land or the building.
And.
So the county did it.
Yeah.
The county's health liability, which isn't signif- insignificant, paid the insurance for that many years as well, and so.
So.
It's been a good partnership, you know.
When was it built?
I'm gonna go get.
I do not know that.
I have. Seventeen.
Well, when I, it was there before.
So, so yeah, I just, I just wanted to make, make that clear, that it's a little convoluted, for sure.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's your building, but we paid for it. And. So that's, that's why our lease is so low. That, that's why our rent is so low. And, and yes, and I have no, I'll be honest, I have no idea what, what you're paying for insurance and. I don't know, Rich may know.
Really? Oh, I don't.
We would keep.
July 1982.
Two is when it was built.
Well, that's when the draft proposal. Probably took another year maybe or something after that before it was actually built, so it's. Read the math, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's forty.
Almost as old as me.
Yeah, so new construction math and.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so sometime, sometime in that.
It does say that Ponti would make monthly payments to Riley County sufficient. To retire in 10 years, the bonds issued by Riley County, first monthly payment would be due upon occupancy. During the second and third 10 years, the lease period, Ponti would make lease payments of $1. And other valuable considerations, I don't know, the valuable considerations. Three hundred thousand dollars for the building, wow.
How much?
Three hundred thousand dollars back then?
Wow.
Sure.
Can we?
No, not considering now.
Can we, can we construct that again? Exactly, right?
Yeah.
And to make it more convoluted, that facility. And then the ambulance facility in that little historical building are all on the same parcel.
Yeah.
They're not separate parcels. They're all in the same parcel.
Oh goodness.
So they're not even separate parcels, all three of those buildings.
Maybe we ought to do something.
So, yeah. Welcome to fun.
Yeah.
So, so I do think that maybe also be part of the, the request for a longer, a longer lease period too.
If I may ask, Di, what, what is Ponti's kind of overall vision, both with the building and. Services being provided moving forward with it, just, just so everybody knows.
Okay, yeah.
I'm aware of it already.
Yeah, um, so, so what we are doing is that we did receive a grant through K Dads. And then subsequently, that money came from, from SAMSA to. That we are expanding our services and we are providing integrated, so primary care. And so, again, we are not trying to. You know, to become the new Stone Creek or anybody like that. But you know, what we have found, as we've become a CCBHC, they, you know, having. Looking at that whole health and looking at the whole person is a big part of that. And you know, when people come in, we try to talk to them about, you know, we, we do health screenings and. We talk to them about, do you have a primary care physician? And, and we find a lot of people don't, and so we try to hook them up and. You know, we, we do everything we possibly can, but. A, a lot of people who are low income, you know, just that, making those connections, they don't have transportation, they don't, you know, they don't have. You know, ma- making sure they get to their appointments and, and stuff like that. It's just hard. And, and so the ability to, you know, with this grant, we'll be able to walk them down the hallway and say, well, let's. Let's have you go see something. And you know, it, it just, it makes it easier for them. And then. You know, having that communication between a primary care physician. And their mental health care providers who are in the same building, we can bring the team together and say. You know, and I know some of the research, research that I've done. Talks about how a lot of times people who have mental health issues, when they go to primary care. They, they, you know, some of the, the physical issues get missed because they, they think that, oh, well, that's just because they're mental issues. And, and so this way, when you're bringing that team together, it helps really kind of identify. This is, this is physical that's causing this, or this is mental that's causing that. And, and so that's what we're doing. We are expanding to be able to provide primary care. You know, and this is really, we're just looking at our population that we're serving. You know, and, and so to do that, we're having to make, you know. You know, remodel, make, you know, phlebotomy rooms, make. You know, exam rooms, you know, we have to have a storage room, we have to have a room that we're gonna have. You know, the freezers and the coolers and stuff like that. And so that's, that's what we're doing.
Are you gonna have the room to do all those things?
Yeah, we will. You know, we've taken out a couple offices right now and, and, you know, for, and made them. Right, you know, at this point, you know, we don't have the beds in there yet. We're trying to raise money for some of this stuff. Uh, cause, cause you know, the grants are helpful, but they're not, you know, all encompassing by any means. You know, but right now, we've taken two rooms and identified them. It's, they're gonna be the exam rooms. Uh, we have one bigger room right now that is kind of the mailroom slash file storage. Um, so I think Nate has planned for where the files are gonna go, or will have a plan for where the files are gonna go and. You know, mailroom doesn't need to be as big as it probably is. Um, so we're gonna, you know, do some moving and shaking there. Um, and, and so that's, that's a piece that. That will, you know, we can make some space there. We are also adding our MOUD, which is medicated. Um, opioid. It, it's basically treatment for people who have, you know, who have, you know, opioid abuse. And, and so right now, we're doing it that in the home, but we're hoping to be able to. Maybe someday, I'll bring that in-house as well, and be able to provide that treatment. You know, in, in office, if, if people want it that way. So, you know, we're, we're making some room, you know, we, we also have a grand plan someday, if we ever find. You know. Space and, and money to bring all of our, all of our offices into one location. Right now, we're in six, seven.
Well, just in Manhattan, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, just in Manhattan. We're not bringing all 10 counties here. But just in Manhattan. And, and so, you know, but we would still keep this building, you know, either, you know, at, probably as that primary care. As, you know, maybe administration, you know, it all kind of depends on how everything works out.
Well, you're real close to our health department. Have you worked with, like, and they have all sorts of space. I don't know if that. Would, if we coordinate something over there, you know.
It's been talked about in the past.
Has that been talked, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know, because there's, that's where Kansa Health was, and that's, that's vacant. Because they moved.
If I'm not mistaken.
So I don't know.
County kind of does something similar. With public health and mental health.
Yeah.
Facility.
But I think the space that they have isn't anywhere close to the space we need.
Need much more space than that.
Yeah, they've been very innovative. The best adjective I can find.
Yeah.
And, and how they've approached it.
Well.
Yeah.
I, I don't have any problems with the renovations and stuff. I just think. Even describing that a hundred years, we just don't know what's gonna happen in there. Think we need some flexibility to be able to work with each other on.
Yeah, and, and I don't know that we're married to the hundred years. You know, I just.
The services are absolutely necessary. There's, there's no argument there.
The GIS website says this in 1983, there's almost 13,000 square feet there at a value of 875,000.
Well, what I was looking at, because we talked about. Got her mentioned. Should we just go ahead and, yeah, it's all one piece, which you can always divide. Set by that property, sell it off. In essence, for the whole thing, they're saying the land value. The land value is 1.3 million. Because that is prime real estate. But.
I know the previous administration, I mean, they were looking at the AIB.
Yeah.
Building, and I don't know whatever happened to that, so.
Um, we toured it, but the way that that's. Kind of set up, I mean, it's set up for. A baking. Yeah, exactly. It's set up for commercial kitchen and the dollars that you would spend either individually or collectively to. Transition that would be, if not the same, about more than just building the new facility, basically. The building's in good shape. I think it's actually been sold.
Has it?
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know.
Somebody mentioned that.
Prime location across from Storm Light Rail.
Or it might not be the entire thing, it might be the kind of garage storage thing or something. I think the university might have bought maybe, but. Um, but you're gonna spend as much money trying to renovate that as you would just.
Well, I didn't know whatever came to that whole thing.
And, and even, you know, and in the bottom line, it really comes down to money, you know, I mean, if, if, if somebody has, you know. Even, yeah, six or seven million that they can start off our campaign with, then, you know, we can, we can get started. Um, we're not there yet. And, and so, you know, so that's, that's kind of where we're, where we're at in the game is, is needing, you know, kind of that, that basis of money. So, yeah. Yes, any other questions? Okay. Okay, yeah, I just, like I said, I just, as I heard you talk, I wanted to clarify, particularly for the, for the newer, newer commissioners, that. It's a really unique situation. All right, thank you.
So that leaves us with, of course, the possible motions we have in here. My understanding, I think, from the discussion is that. We're good with the lease, but we may want to make a change to that term. Um, does the board have an agreement on what they would like to see as far as term goes?
I'm okay with 10. Like I say, because there's still questions. You know.
Okay.
Do they take over the whole thing, or do they? Find $6 million under a rock and build a new building?
And I hope you do, by the way.
Yeah, I hope so. I realize that's not.
You know, but I would, I would love that. And like I said, it's not to say even if we did, that we wouldn't. Marketer that, there, there might be some value in having, you know, a separate area, you know, for, for. That purpose, or, you know, even to turn into crisis or something, you know, it's all dependent on a whole lot of different things.
Is 10 years a comfortable term for you guys at this point in time to make that investment?
You and Mike have had more conversation about this than I.
Yeah, um, I mean, I would think 20, because we're not gonna get all of this done even within the next few years.
That's kind of what I thought.
So we might be halfway into that 10 years where we are able to financially cover all of this. So I would. Twenty, I mean.
That's, that's what I was kind of thinking too.
Yeah, I'd be okay with 20.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
20 from the board? Okay. So what I will do then is I'll make those changes, of course, run it by. Uh, Mike and his team and, uh, and as long as we're all in agreement, I'll have that. Lease in front of you and you guys can sign it. We'll be good to go.
Yeah, then we just do it under the business.
Yeah, we'll just do it under the business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, Shiloh. Not sure.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner Shiloh Hager, Riley County Treasurer with the March. Revenue information, finished the first quarter of the year. Can't believe that already. So here we go. So ended the month of March with a balance in the general fund of just over 13.2 million dollars. Our ARPA fund is at 6.2. We have total, a total fund balance as of the end of March of 76 million, 691, 542. Our interest for the month of March. Year to date, we have interest. Year to date, we have, um, interest from the, um, our investments of six hundred and forty-seven thousand, forty dollars and twenty-eight cents. That is thirty percent of what is budgeted for, um, for the year. March is twenty-five percent, so we're sitting at just over five percent over budget on our investment income. The ARPA money has generated eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. Through the month of March, our active checking account earned, um, a rate of four point four two percent for March. And we did our, um, I received actually two different C D bids, um, in March for four point two seven percent. So. And once again, we are still getting a lot of activity when we put out a C D bid, um, a lot of interest on the banks wanting. To ha- hold on to our money for us, so, so that's great. So our March general fund revenues, um, came in at, um, just over one point five million. Which is seventeen percent over what was budgeted for the month of March. We did make our second tax distribution on March twentieth, so you can kind of see here. Through, through March where we are, where we're sitting year to date. And, um, we have collected, um, a total of forty-nine point eight four percent. Of total budgeted revenues, so, um, just a reminder, second, today is, what is today? April tenth, so one month from today, second half taxes will, will be due, so we should start seeing, um, a lot of tax. Payments coming in, um, in for this, for this next, in this next month. Sales tax that we, that the county gets to retain, the general fund sales tax amount was a hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven forty-seven, sixty-four. You can see here, that's about four point one six percent lower than twenty twenty-four. And it's about ten, over almost eleven percent less than what we have budgeted for the month. Um, I did go back and look, and historically, um, the March, March, um, distribu- sales tax distribution represents January sales. And historically, that does, is a lot lower than.
This year we had a lot of snow.
And we had a lot of snow. But I did look, and historically, that, um, that number does typically, is a, is a little bit lower than, than past months. So I'm not too concerned that, um, we'll make it up in other months, I'm sure. So that being said, you can see here that, um, year to date, we have five hundred and seventy-two thousand, four thirty-nine of the two point two. That we had budgeted, so twenty-six percent, which is just right on, right on target for what we have budgeted through March. The road and bridge sales tax, um, what we retained was a hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight ten. I say retained, that's the amount we get, um, very, almost right on to where we were at this point last year.
Should say full on, we don't have to share that.
We don't have to share that one, that, that's, that's correct. And year to date, um, thirty-three point six seven percent of what we had budgeted, so. And here you can see where we are year to date, we are, um, we are still sitting at three point nine one percent of our total. Of what, um. Is high, three point nine one percent higher than last year, so we are, um. Okay, there, um, this just shows your breakdown. And then this shows the distribution between how that, um. Was the, the total six hundred and eighty-four thousand of sales tax that was collected in Riley County is distributed among the cities. Any questions about any of that? Okay, as you can see in my shirt today, uh, our office is celebrating and, um, as it's donate life. April is donate life month, so our driver's license office, we're joining dri- driver's license offices across the state to. Celebrate those who've chosen to be organ donors and, um, so that's, that's what we're doing in our office this week. I also wanted to just give a quick reminder to the public as well. That, um, May seventh is the deadline for real I D, so. You know, that started probably five years ago and they kept, you know, then COVID happened and they kept extending it, extending it. But as far as we know, it's not being extended, so May seventh is the deadline where you would need to have a real I D in order to board an airplane. Or get into certain federal buildings, so, um, if anybody needs to get that taken care of, they can make an appointment. Um, online at our office or the full service office can help them with that, and all the information is online about the requirements, so.
You get a star on your driver's license, is that correct?
That is correct.
If you look, look at your driver's license, oh, I got it, yeah.
Yes, so, okay.
There's a barcode on there, it's a little bit different too, so. Places, TSA, agencies, even state agencies are probably gonna use that too, like, they scan it and.
Yeah, so, just wanted to.
Think about you.
Let, let the, you know, just a quick reminder that that is, that is also coming up.
When the first came out.
Here in September, so, I'm on the second cycle of that, so, I'm ahead of the curve.
And if you already have the star, then you don't have to bring in all of the documentation, just, it's just that first time to get the star.
Cause on this particular driver's license, I actually like my picture, I'd like to keep it for a while.
You get six years, right? But other than that, we're just plugging along, so. Always, if you ever need me, you know where to find me. All right, have a great day.
Thanks, Shiloh.
Darren.
I was rea- I knew that, but I was just reading here.
Seen Jason here.
Uh, yeah, the, yeah, Jack, we could, we could always update that, so, um, good morning, Commissioners. Chairman McKinley, Commissioners, uh, appreciate the opportunity to be here, uh, Christian and I give our economic development, military updates, so Darren Solden. Uh, Director of Economic Development, the Manhattan Chamber, uh, gonna highlight a couple entrepreneurship activities here that are going on, um, oh. One happened this, this past month, on March twelfth, the, uh, Riley County Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge was held. And so it's held down Manhattan Town Center, that's a collaborative effort between, um, uh, Riley County Extension, uh, John Jobe. Lot of kudos to John, he does a ton of work on that particular program. And Stephanie Pierce with Innovate Twenty Four are the ones that, uh, that do a lot of the legwork on that and help put that on. Um, that is a countywide, um, that's one thing I want to stress, and traditionally, a lot of the students for that have come from Manhattan High. But, but there has been in past years, some participation from other high schools in the county, that is a countywide competition where. Where high schoolers are eligible to compete, uh, there are prizes, cash prizes, um, that are, that are available for, for top finishers there. And then there's also the ability for top finisher and, and others then to apply, uh, and go on to the statewide competition. Uh, so the statewide youth entrepreneurship challenge, which is held at K State, so that's a partnership between, um, Kansas, um. Our Network Kansas and Kansas State University and the entrepreneurship program up there, Chad Jackson and, and that group. So they put on a great event that is coming up here on April seventeenth, so there will be folks from Riley County that, that qualified through the, um, the youth entrepreneurship. Challenge back in March, uh, that will go on to, um, to that event, so again, uh, big shout out to, um, to John Jobe. And, and, uh, Riley County Research Extension, Stephanie Pearson of Eight Twenty Four, uh, Manhattan Town Center. From use the space, that was a great opportunity to get everybody out and you could have, they had, they had tables set up where they had their presentations and their presentation boards. There was space that was dedicated to do interviews and pitches, and so it really worked out well and, and, um, um, got some good, uh, good recognition through that. So, uh, good event and look forward to doing it again next year. Um, also on the entrepreneurship front, uh, updating on a couple of the, um, the loan programs. That, um, that Innovate Twenty Four, um, uh, administers, uh, we're up to just over one point three million dollars in total. Small business loans in the, in the immediate area, so some of those are on the Potawatomi side of Manhattan, but, but that's, that's Riley County, Manhattan. And, and then kind of the blue township area and the area, um, of Manhattan that's in Potawatomi County, so that's significant. It's also about two hundred and sixty-five thousand of that has been approved this year, so a couple key loans there, and I know there's a hundred thousand dollar, um. Grow Kansas, uh, loan that's in the pipeline, that's a, a rural Riley County loan. So again, just a reminder that those are programs that are available across the, across the county, um, the Chamber is the entity that, uh. Has that, that partnership with, um, Network Kansas to administer those, but, but let's be honest, Stephanie and Innovate Twenty Four are the ones that are doing all the work on that. So we appreciate their, um, their, uh, partnership on that and, and carrying the, uh, carrying the entrepreneurship part of our. Of our economic development, uh, development mission. And then the last thing for me, just wanted to, to, um, make note of, um, of Susan, the news this last week. But the, um, the Economic Development Project just across the county line over on the, on the east side of town, um, in that spec industrial building. Uh, that the, that the city was taking a look at last week, um, P T M W out of Topeka, uh, I think that's a really great project for our region. Uh, and it's one that, uh, I just want to take a moment to highlight the importance of Manhattan Area Technical College and technical training, um, in that. Uh, these are gonna be, uh, a number of, uh, a, a good number of welding jobs, good paying jobs, I think as we look across our region. Whether it be folks that are, um, in high school, taking part in career and tech ed programs at our, at our area high schools. Uh, military that are transitioning or military family members looking for jobs, uh, these are the types of projects that, that create a lot of opportunity. And, um, uh, M A T C has been very, very engaged and, and, um, uh, both with us and with the company on this particular. This particular deal and, and is gonna be key to that pipeline of talent, not only for, obviously for this company, but for others that are doing that kind of. That kind of work in the region, so, um, good growth opportunity, um, a- across the board and, and again, and the technical education piece. Both that's going on in the high schools and also at M A T C is gonna be really important to helping ensure that they meet their workforce numbers and ultimately the economic impact for our, for our region. So it's good to have good partners there. Uh, any questions for me before I hand it over to Christian?
What's, um, and then maybe you don't know this outright, but. The estimated starting wage?
I can tell you, yeah, the, the, so the average wa- wage is just under sixty thousand. Um, obviously there are a few management level positions and it's in, and I apologize, I have that in front of me, but it's, it is publicly available, it's in the, um. The City of Manhattan Commission Packet from last week has the table in their economic development, set of application that outlines all of the jobs, all a hundred and forty-six jobs. And where they fit as far as, as far as wages and everything, but yeah, average wage and, uh, a few dollars under, under sixty thousand a year. And, and the large majority of jobs there fit into that, into that area, I mean, into that, you know, welders and, and, and those sorts of folks, so. Yeah, I think it's definitely something that, um, that, and obviously with everything going on now too, and, and, you know, interest over on the, uh. Womigo Caterpillar, et cetera, I mean, it's gonna be a competitive market, um, with, with multiple different players in it for, for welding jobs, so. Absolutely, as, as the next, next one that was gonna, gonna, gonna roll off is that, uh, you know, that you've got, you've got a number of other employers, Florence included around the region. And so, uh, again, that, that competition for talent and especially when we've got, um, training. Programs that can, you know, we can grow the pie there, not just all be pulling from the same number of people. Uh, that's gonna be good for wages, it's gonna be good for, for area, for opportunity for area residents, and very positive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate it.
I can tell I haven't been here, the mic got a little, or.
This is the very first day.
Move the mic up to me, so, but, um, good morning Commissioners, um, I apologize for not being able to join you guys last month and thank you to Darren for covering down. And we were into peak a day for Manhattan Leadership, so, um, it's been a, a busy month at Fort Riley, um, as you guys can all hear. And, um, tell by your windows rattling and probably your dishes adjusting, um, but, um, they Sound of Freedom are going on. Um, currently Second Brigade is out, um, qualifying, um, with some of DeBardi, um, out at the gunery. Uh, First Brigade, as you guys know, is preparing for their nine-month rotation to Europe. Um, it seems just like yesterday, it was actually just last month that they got back from the training center for Irwin. Um, so just in time to get the tanks off the rail yard, uh, make sure they are good to go and they are in preparation to head out. Um, with the first, um, first troops leaving out probably, um, the beginning of, uh, May. Um, and then the main part moving out in the months of June. Um, so, um, other things that had been going on last, uh, week, we had Savannah Lee from Pawnee Mental Health, um, be our guest speaker at her M R C lunch. Um, and she's just leading a new military treatment program that, uh, focuses on best practices for mental health care for, uh, not only milit. Military families, but also our veterans, um, so just continuing to strengthen her relationship with not only Fort Riley, the V A, um, and then other local providers. Um, so just ensuring that military service members have the best care, especially when it comes to mental health. Um, last, uh, in March, and end of March, we actually took Manhattan Leadership to Fort Riley. Um, so it's always been one of my favorite days, um, to get leaders in Manhattan to Fort Riley to show them all the capabilities. Um, so they started the afternoon, um, actually going to the railhead, um, and just seeing the railhead. I was hoping some tanks would be, um, getting ready to be loaded, but they're in that transition where it's, it's quiet for them. Um, so they started off at the railhead and then we actually took them, um, to First Division where they were able to hear from, um. He's Colonel Hardman, but officially tomorrow, who will be Brigadier General Hardman, he gets his star tomorrow. Um, but he really focused on leadership, not only, um, within the military, but also as civilian services. We had great conversations about, you know, um, Fort Riley and all the service members, they're there to train. Um, and so they are trained and they are ready, um, and then they actually got to end the day at one of the simulation trainings. Um, and one of the focuses for there was, um, to actually see where their tax dollars go. Um, and just the amazing training facilities that Fort Riley has, um, and the fact that it, it helps us. Considering the fact that if we didn't have these training facilities, the soldiers would be actually gone a lot more. But it enables them to practice, um, for everyday situations in real time. Uh, April first kicked off month of the military, uh, child, so I'd like to, um, give a shout out to the public, um, and all military children. Um, for their resilienceness through, uh, deployments, uh, transitions, moves and everything. Um, and so they were supposed to have their, uh, parade last week, but it was a little cold and rainy, so they were actually had their month of military child parade tomorrow. Um, but if anybody in the public, they have a pancake breakfast going on on Fort Riley, um, from nine to eleven, they'll have activities, like I said. Uh, if you like pancakes, sausage and bacon, you know, please go out, help support. Um, and in, in the end of the month, the last Saturday, which is the twenty-sixth, they will have their kids fest. So it is free, it is open to the public, um, regardless of if you're a military related or not. If you'd just like to go on post, help celebrate, uh, military children and just, you know, get your kids to run out some energy. Um, please go to R C C, the festivities start at, uh, eleven and they usually go till three. Um, and then the last thing, um, it's a little far out, but, um, Fort Riley is super excited, they are bringing back their concert series. Um, and so the first concert will be June thirteenth, and like I said, I'll brief it the next two months. Um, but Lieutenant Dan Band is coming back to Fort Riley, um, and so like I said, June thirteenth, seven P M, um, at the Verdi Parade Field. The concert is free and open to public, um, as long as you get your real I D, um, you can actually go online and get your pass. Um, if you don't have a real I D, you can actually just go to the visitor center, there's just a couple extra steps, you don't know the group. Um, but like I said, they're super excited, um, and it's actually just the kickoff, uh, because as you guys know, June fourteenth is the Army's two hundred and fifty. Um, birthday, so, um, pending that, any questions?
K State Army?
Oh, yes, K State Army is in September and I forgot to mention, so, um, this Sunday, K State Baseball, it is Fort Riley Day. So, um, please come out, but yeah, we are in the full planning of, uh, K State Army coming in September, so it's gonna be a good time.
And, um, on base passes for us are expiring.
Yes, so your passes are, you guys are good to go pick them up. Yeah, so you all should have your guys' passes.
Well, it's April.
Yeah, mine expired in January, so I just renewed, everybody, I, I didn't look at my expiration date and then I got caught at the gate, so. I had to do the turnaround with Shane. Yep, it's turned around, it took me two seconds.
Yeah, they're, they're great up there when it comes to that.
They don't give you new pictures, so that's the only sad part.
We'll just have to, um, who's the sponsor? Okay, that's all I need to know.
So, thank you guys, appreciate it.
You asked me that the last time, I don't know.
It's just easier than having to go to the visitor center every time you give it. It literally takes like less than five minutes.
I'm, cause I got it once.
Yeah.
First and then. I'm usually against this, you're in a bad status, I never got.
Ready Commissioners?
We start off probably with the motion. Need to move. I'll move that recesses the Board of County Commission and then reconvene as the Board of County Health.
Or second up?
Been moved in second and under recess. Excuse me, as Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Health, all in favor?
Good morning, Jenny. Welcome to join me. Good morning. It's still morning. Yes, Commissioners. Jenny and I are here with an update with our Narcan and Harm Reduction work. But before we get started, I want to list some items on your desk. So you have them in front of you as we begin to.
That's colorful, man.
It is. Have this relationship. And then these are just going to be some examples. We open it up to the page here. Here. See together. As the reference.
Oh, can I get your medicine? I need to get the combination.
So last time we visited, it was in fall of twenty twenty four. And we just talked a lot about Narcan education. Let's see if we can get this up here so it'll look like something. And we just want to remind you of what Narcan is and the work that you all have allowed us to do since the last time we met. So we know that Narcan and you have some Narcan in front of you and you're welcome to open that box and actually look at what's in there. And its sole purpose is for reversal. It's the reversal of an opioid overdose. So we have some asks of you today as we continue this work. So with lots of talk in in conversations with staff, with community partners, thank you, Vivian, and also with our director and our director having conversations with you, we would like to provide Narcan to all of Riley County Departments, and we would like to do that in the form of the one box that you have in front of you. And I'm going to let Jenny demonstrate that. So you're welcome to open and break that seal on those one boxes.
One of my questions.
Yes. Go over it.
What is it?
So Jenny is going to open up that one box with you all. Sorry, I probably should have broke all the seals for you.
Pretty important to see what.
This would go by the A E D machines, and so it it's just a box that's not going to be tied to that at all. I mean, you can just grab it and go if you have a situation. So first thing, you would call nine one one. You would open this and then it's going to give you instructions. Sixty seconds of instructions on how to administer Narcan in in case of opioid overdose or eventual poisoning situation. So that's going to be from start to finish. That's going to tell you, you know, remind you to call nine one one, give you all the instructions to administer that nasal spray, put them in recovery position and wait for EMS. And like I said, that was just sixty seconds. And you can change it with a click of a button to the Spanish version or the closed caption, too. They really thought of all all avenues there. Then there's a training video that's six minutes long, so you can train all staff from start to finish just by allowing them to take this box and and use that. And it answers a lot of those questions there, too. So like I said, I like to say the device.
Anyone having questions about the one box? Anything we need to be clear? Okay, so that's our first ask is to allow these boxes to be placed in all Riley County offices by the A E D stations in order to be accessible should they be needed. The next ask is with that, we would like the opportunity to provide training, Narcan training to all of Riley County staff that request that training. Next, we would like to place what we are calling Public Health Stations. So if you look here, I did look at this as an idea of what they would look like. These are very expensive items. However, we have contacted the Manhattan Mercury to see if they would be willing to provide us with newspaper stands that we can repurpose. And so we're able to simulate this for little no cost. So for example, if we were to purchase this one here, this one is like twelve hundred dollars and this little one here is like five hundred. But with that repurposed mail newspaper stand, we can also partner with some students to help us design it by painting it and repurposing it for the need of a public health station.
What about old pay for stands that are sitting empty?
They're gone, I bet. I don't know where they are.
Recurbs for a public health use, we would be all for that. So repurposing that. And so our ask is that we are allowed to put two of those stations outside of the Health Department. So one would be located at the Tecumseh Road address and the other at the Claflin address. Next, we would like to work with our community partners to distribute Narcan to the community and also provide training and education to them as requested. Anyone have any questions or concerns about our ask? So with this, one of the most important parts, we had lots of conversations with EMS as to our why to come up with this ask. So we came up with a combined statement from the Health Department in EMS about why we think this is important. And the most important part is that our local government offices serve as hubs for residents, including vulnerable populations that who who may be at risk for poisoning by stocking naloxone in these locations. And we can provide that safety net for community community members in case we do have an emergency. We know that naloxone is proven cost-effective tool in reversing opioid poisoning and having it on hand in our county offices ensures that we have a quick response to allow our first responders to get there in time and saves lives. So it buys us some time for for emergency response. This is also a tool to enhance public safety. With the increased rate of poisonings happening, public offices have an important role in keeping the public safe. So that was the combined statement that we came up with for our why for our ask. Any questions there about that part? Okay. Okay. And again, just having that opioid overdose naloxone toolkit, we're calling it the one box. This is a great tool that was created in West Virginia, am I correct? And we have purchased these. The plan again is to get this out to all county offices and make sure that anyone who would run to get this would be trained in how to use it. The next thing we want to provide you with. Okay. Think I'm good on time. Is we also shifting gears here about another initiative, just including the safety aspect. Is a lot of this is just about medication safety. And so both Andrea and Jenny have been going around the community just talking about medication safety. One of the things we thought to include in that conversation is locking your medication. So as a result of that, we created a Take the Pledge to Lock Your Meds. And that's why you have those med boxes in front of you. And so basically, what the pet pledge is, we have it up on our Alcumper Survey System, and people can scan a Q R code. I believe that information may be in your bag, too, with what the Q R code is and then also locations where you can safely dispose of your medication. But we also printed out copies of the pledge so you all can see it there. And by taking this pledge, you're ensuring that you are keeping your medication safe for those who may be vulnerable. Children, anyone who, you know, may get into your medication. And so as a way to do that, we figured we would be able to provide these lock boxes. So we provide either a lock box or bag. And we let our community members decide which one would work best for them. And that's why you have that in front of you. So we wanted to share this this morning, just so you know some of the things that we're doing to keep the community safe. See if you have any questions or concerns and also give you both, you all, excuse me, an opportunity to lock your medication and take our pledge. So Jenny, do you have any additional things you might add?
So drug take back day, the DEA is April twenty sixth of this year. And so that's why this is just our due diligence to give the information to residents here, community members, that you can take your your medication back around to lots of the pharmacies. So in that bag, too, is just referral list of those those places you can go to. The Vitera bags there that you had, those are just something that we're also putting out to the community. And you can just put your unused medication in there. There's instructions on the back, zip that closed, and then it's safe just to toss them in the trash. So we're just trying to, you know, connect safety medication with the community members as easy as we can and just start that conversation. What what they can do in their own homes. So.
Yeah, you know, on your on your newspaper stand. What what are you going to have in?
So we would we would like to place in there Narcan. And we also would like to make it a full public health box. So we'll we'll let Diane identify the items that she feels that the Health Department should supply, but the first and and major thing would be Narcan in those boxes. And I guess to follow up with some different additional information, when I did reach out to the Mercury, they are able to give us those newspaper stands. The cost would be ten dollars per stand. And so that is way cheaper than what is offered in that pamphlet there in front of you.
But and does it not, does the weather not affect those?
So when we indicate that it is, yes, so there is what there is a temperature guidance on there. Those days that it is too hot for it to be outside, we will then remove it and put it inside our building. And each building has a table, like a resource table, and it would be placed in that on that resource table with information to say come inside to grab it.
Okay, because normally it'd be open twenty, it'd be available twenty four hours, I seen. When it's outside, but hot and I see them cold.
Right. There is, there is expiration on it. What you have in front of you, I believe those boxes expire December of twenty twenty five, if I remember correctly, of the Narcan.
And the FDA did extend the Narcan exclusively just that Narcan brand another year past the point of the expiration date, that it's just the Narcan brand.
I don't think so. I think you covered it.
Okay. And so the most important part is getting permission to go ahead and move forward with these asks. If this is allowable, we would like these one boxes here to stay here and we will place them in the buildings here. And then we will continue to then deliver it to the rest of the county offices. We have packaged it in a way that we believe is the easiest for response. So inside the box with the instructions, this is P P E. So it gives you what you need to keep yourself safe when you're administering the dose. And then we're taking the doses outside of the box and placing them here, just because if it is an emergency, we don't want anyone to have to fiddle with opening the box to get to it. So this is what it would look like in our buildings. I don't know. What's the next step? A motion or approval or however you all want to do it? Yes, sir.
Did you coordinate with John Ellerman, maybe on the locations, kind of like they did with the A E Ds out there that
We can definitely.
Where we're going to put them and how we're going to display them, you know, that way they're easily accessible.
Yes, we can definitely make that that connection before deliveries.
Yeah. Who will place them, I would imagine?
Because we only have what, one in this building, this one here?
I think so. I think so. I do not know. I remember when that was a big push and all of those got installed, you know?
I'm sure they're in all of buildings.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, it'd be good.
We called it our Narcan Proposal for Public Health and Safety.
There is.
You could sneak it up, pass the motion, but if you could send that motion to Cindy Cable, that way we know specifically what you're asking and specifically what they're.
Okay, perfect.
That way it's in your wording because we won't get it right.
We appreciate just the ability to continue this work and come in and educate and update you. I know that the Health Department is moving forward with us as supervisors coming in to provide an update. So when it is my turn, I will let you know where we are with this and also how many community members have taken the pledge. For additional information on that, we were able to purchase two hundred of the lock boxes and two hundred of the bags. We probably have over a hundred people thus far who have taken the pledge. So it's been received and very helpful. We've also partnered with community partners such as the Crisis Stabilization Unit to also provide it as a part of their safety plans. And so that's all I have. So thank you for your time.
Good place to another good place to be at the Common Table where they serve meals. That would be a good place to have a.
Yes, we actually had a meeting with Debbie who's on the the board, and so we talked to her about that. And so she'll have to get back with us about what that decision would look like. Yeah. And then if there's any other places you can think of. All right. And if you'd like, we will we'll take the the one boxes back. And then we will get that delivered once we. And you all are welcome to keep the Narcan.
I'll do that. I do. I have some medications.
Information is inside, how you set the lock, and then you have the places that was right in here.
Got about like six years of blood pressure. Okay, so we need to make a motion, correct?
Correct.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the Narcan Proposal for Public Health and Safety as presented by members of the Health Department.
I'd second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Narcan Proposal for Public Health and Safety as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no. I will keep that. I will keep that. I'm not gonna the old payphone thing, I'm gonna look into that.
I'm watching you. I bought a payphone. Right. It was, it was from a hundred and twenty years ago on eBay. And shipping was more than.
Oh, I'm sure.
Thing weighed almost three hundred.
Can I ask why?
I was gonna make it into a bathroom.
I'm just gonna leave that one alone.
I'm sure it was.
Manhattan or in Leavenworth had a one, a wooden one.
Yeah.
Okay, um good morning, commissioners. Diane Creek, Riley County Health Department, Health Director. Um I'm here to talk to you about the community baby shower that we're planning on May thirty first. Um it's gonna be up at Northview Elementary from nine thirty to eleven in the morning. Um and we've been working uh with Vivian on the promotional, like the flyer and the yard signs and the banner. And um having some discussions about how to lay it out and and what we can have on the signs and and that kind of thing. So um first of all, I wanted to pass out to you. Um this is what, this is the flyer that's been approved. So that's um so that's a flyer that's been approved. Oh, we could do that too.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. So Vivian's handing you the previous year's um information that has gone out, the the promotional stuff. So and then I met with Commissioner Fokie um yesterday, I believe it was. And she offered some suggestions on changes to um the yard sign and the and the banner. Um because those two things are are bigger. Likewise, so I made or uh staff made the changes based on her suggestions.
Okay.
So the first one is the banner and the second one, it would be a yard sign. Um so you can see what that would look like.
I don't know if you need a QR code on a yard sign.
They put rail on ATM, so.
Uh last year we found that a lot of our um attendees did uh use the QR code. Um so we have them at bus stops, we have them outside of built of businesses that allow us to put them out there. And so sometimes it you'd be surprised, people do take their phones and, you know. Do that. Um and then they can register quickly that way. So it just takes them to the registration page and um they can register.
Well, and the suggestion is that when you look at something, it's gotta say what it is, when it is and where it is first and then.
Last year, they were all over the place.
Yeah, exactly. And part of this is is grant driven because Breva writes this community baby shower into her grant from KDHE. So um because it's one of the activities that she does. Um and KDHE, honestly, her grant, you know, pays the staff time to to develop all of this and and to plan it and to carry it out. So so part of it's grant driven.
Looks a lot better.
Yeah, uh I mean, it 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 has a, you know, all the important information at the top. So that, yeah, is if you're just driving by, you know, you just get a free glimpse at it, so.
There's one out now. I drive by, I guess, I've driven by. Can't read it.
Yeah, those are everywhere. Yeah, those are everywhere.
That's a case date, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't ever have time to read them either. I've just seen Run for the Roses.
It's like a political yard sign base.
And most important still. And we'll say something.
Just real quick.
The the point of of decision that I was hoping you guys could lay in on is just that bit at the top. So in the past, it's been Riley County Community Baby Shower hosted by Riley County Health Department. And I wasn't comfortable with a unit smaller than Riley County Health Department. So we just wanted to get your opinion about the maternal and child health. Being the agency, peace being on the as the host.
I think it needs to be flipped. I think you need to highlight the health department as a whole for that. Nothing against maternal and child health, but it's a product of the health department and um everything that I've seen in the last couple of years highlights the health department doing this. And be consistent with the community because this is a new event still and we try to build momentum with it and um changing that kind of create a, I don't want to say contradiction, but confusion. And I think we should just keep it as is.
Um I I I definitely agree. And the reason that there was a little slight change this year was because of the of the um logo. So last year we had that maternal child health logo on most of our stuff. And so with the change of not having that logo approved, um we definitely wanted to add the name then somewhere. And again, we don't we, if you want the, we can change it however you want, as long as we can just keep that maternal child.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I just like to see that.
So that we can connect that to our outreach and portions of our grant that's required. But yeah, that's that's kind of the reason for the change, because we had to take the logo off.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you like, let me make sure that we're clear. So you like um Riley County Health Department and then maternal and child health underneath that? Okay, okay.
That would work.
Okay, yeah, we can flip those.
Yeah, outside of that, I can't wait to see him going up around town.
We'll save these when we drive by.
A neighbor had one actually right across the street in front of me. So, yeah, it's good.
They've had great success.
Yeah.
Lots of community turnout and.
I think Mother Nature hasn't always cooperated, but.
Uh two years ago, we had a hundred and sixty-three uh participants. We did the yard signs and the banners last year and we had three hundred and eighty-nine. So obviously the marketing is working. Um and also we found that um when we we asked the question, like, how did you hear about the event? Um a lot of it was through the yard signs, actually. So as well as the women's health group and uh yeah, so she is. So we're gonna be placing banners there as well.
Okay, all right. I think we're good. I think we can move forward.
All right.
Yay.
The goal. It looks like you don't have much time to move forward there. Getting taken care of.
Thank you. We did.
You can scroll down there, Jacob. Your information's on there.
Please pass this over. As recent as yesterday, KDHE, this is just the uh outgoing needles operating. I I don't have this in my slides, just given the the recency of the data, but as you can see from the uh the dashboard, they're up to thirty-two cases, which is an increase of a case count of four from the year, or few from the week prior. There's been a few new counties that have been added. Uh most importantly, most notably, their population centers in southwest Kansas, B. Ford and Fannie County. Uh KDHE is still tracking it closely. At this juncture, it's tough to say if they're containing cases as well as they would like, but they're making their way through it. Uh to that end, we're increasing our MMR clinic specifically. That would be the vaccine that we administer to help prevent the transmission of measles and the contracting of measles. We'll be at local early learning centers for USC three three, as well as having some clinics onsite as well. Uh we've definitely seen an increase in the number of measles vaccines we're giving. Uh the best thing we can do right now is to make sure everyone's vaccinated, keep ourselves safe. But measles is a highly transmissible virus. Only so much we can do to prevent that transmission other than immunization and then just good case contacting, a good case investigations. So outside of that, I'd like to give just a brief overview of some of the the work that we've done this past year in the public health clinic. Uh notably, when it comes to our service lines, we really have three primary ones that we work out of. Uh for the most part, the immunizations, reproductive health, as well as communicable disease, which is really kind of a a pretty general term for us, but those are kind of the three service lines we work out of primarily. Immunizations, we administered five thousand three hundred and thirty-three vaccines across two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine unique patients in the county year twenty twenty-four. And notably, we had given five thousand three hundred and fifty-two vaccines in calendar year twenty twenty-three, so pretty stable there. Uh likewise, in calendar year twenty twenty-three, that was across three thousand three hundred and sixteen unique patients. So what we're seeing is more consistency in the patient groups that we're serving. So more routine immunizations, lifespan immunizations, less when it comes to pandemic immunizations like what we were doing for COVID nineteen. Uh likewise, we are still doing a number of outreach events with local schools. That'd be three seven eight, three eight three, three eight four. Manhattan Catholic Schools, doing vaccine clinics onsite as well as with local employers. Uh we'll look at some of our our payer data later, but we're seeing more private immunizations and private work that we're doing. So to that end, we've been contracting with more payers in the region, places like Ambetter, Cigna, Healthy Blue, which is a new Can Care MCO, as well as Tri West, which is notably the new Tri Care West Plan Administrator. When it comes to the work we do for reproductive health, we serve one thousand one hundred and nine unique patients in county year twenty twenty-four. And this is those that are specific to Title Ten or our our family planning grant that we received from the state. Uh the payer breakdown for those patients, four ninety-seven weren't insured, one hundred and thirty-seven and were publicly insured, that would be things like Can Care or Medicare, and three hundred and seventy-five were privately insured. As a part of that service line, we performed one thousand one hundred and thirty-five STI panels in a year uh twenty twenty-four, and we're still doing breast and cervical cancer screening, doing hundreds of breast and cervical cancer screens each year. Lastly, for communicable disease, part of this was related to the outbreak that we saw in Yandotte and Johnson County this past year, but we performed six hundred and ninety-five TV skin tests, investigated multiple outbreaks within the county. Uh we were assigned a hundred and thirty-two case investigations from the state, and I'm not gonna read all two of those for you, but it just kind of gives an idea of some of the cases we were investigating this past year. Uh county health rankings did present some of their data fairly recently in terms of uh twenty twenty-five. Again, I always want to talk about county health rankings with a caveat that most of that data is itself fairly dated. So a lot of the data they're presenting probably will be from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So even though you're seeing twenty twenty-five as being associated with that ranking, some of this data, there there's certainly a lead time and it is fairly dated itself. But for uh for this last year, we saw that uh Wright County is basically tied for seventh in um what they refer to as population health and wellbeing in the past. It's been health outcomes. But um you can see that there's a number of metrics that they use to come by that data, but as we're seeing it, just as a trend, uh Wright County is still faring slightly better across the state and across the US. If I recall correctly, last year, I believe we were on eight. So again, fairly stable is what we've seen the years past. Looking at some of those metrics, there is really nothing that should be shocking to us. Everything has been relatively stabled up at this point. Again, premature deaths are still very, very low, which is a byproduct of the demographic composition of Riley County, being a very young county. Uh to that end, child infant mortality is still low, which is very, very good to see. Along with that, things like quality of life have been relatively stable and pretty consistent across the state. Same is true of things like HIV prevalence, diabetes prevalence. Again, things have been trending uh relatively consistently for us, which has been good to see. When it comes to community conditions, I think that's where Riley County has oftentimes found itself making headlines, not for good or bad, just notable. Basically, given the the demographic composition of our county, there are some unique characteristics that that do find themselves uh unique compared to other counties that we've seen in the state of Kansas. Uh that said, we still ranked, I believe, fifteenth most favorable this year for uh for these these metrics, which are community conditions. Again, in the years past, they have referred to them as health factors. Uh I believe last year we were ranked fourteenth, so again, relatively stable. But when it comes to looking at things like community conditions, there are some high highs and some lower lows. Uh one of our high highs would actually be our flu vaccination rates. This data is pulled from Medicare beneficiaries specifically. So when we look at things like Medicare influenza vaccination rates, we see that our rates are still very, very high in in the county of Riley as compared to most counties across the state of Kansas. Uh that's been something that's been routinely high for us across the years and something that still proves to be very, very high. There are are other things that are a bit unique to us, whether it be our food environment index, which is often pulled from USDA data. So you United States part of agriculture, there's been some access issues when it comes to access to healthy food options, which we can look at in a little bit later. We've seen some movement as well in things like primary care physician ratios, dentist ratios. Again, this data is pretty dated. So this would have been, if I recall correctly, around twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. As Stormont Vale has moved into the space, I think some of those metrics have changed, at least when it comes to primary care providers. Dentists, not a lot has changed as far as I'm aware, but this is some of the ratios that we're currently working with and how we compare across the state, across the US. Again, that's why I applaud some of the efforts that we've seen from entities like the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce for doing things like their Manhattan Health Fair. As access becomes more and more of a challenge for some of our 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 community members, finding ways to help to uh maybe not overcome these barriers, but at least address them and combat them as best we can. This is very, very helpful. When it comes to other things like our community conditions, some of our our high highs, or in this case, an actually a low, is something we like to see. Our teen birth rate is still very, very low. It's been something that's been consistent for Riley County throughout the years. Uh things like drug or drug overdose less, excuse me, drug overdose deaths are still very, very low. There are other things that are still relatively high, whether it becomes, or whether it's looking at things like adult smoking. Uh we'll look at this number later, but again, S S I rates have been relatively high for us in years past, but uh trends have actually been very, very uh been, I won't say good, but they've been better. So they are improving. And we'll look at some of that data again. That is the one caveat with county health rankings is most of the data is dated. So the the rates that they're pulling here are from KDHE data from twenty twenty-two.
We're, we're a college.
We are, we are.
Could be worse.
It could be, it could be. And so those efforts um yeah, we'll we'll look at that here in a bit from uh some more recent data. The one thing I do want to look at, and I referenced in the past, is our limited access to health and foods. Again, this is USDA data. But we can see Riley County is very, very unique and uh a bit of an outlier when it comes to comparing across the state, across the US. This is often, this is a metric that comes from the USDA's food environment index. And what they're looking at is people with um who live in a household with lower income. How close are they to a grocery store? How close are they to a a point of access for local healthy foods? And that would be where Riley County has typically been pretty high and where we still find ourselves, especially as we've seen some consolidation across our our grocery store lines and just some of the movement we've seen up north as well. You can see here that Riley County is let alone in some of the challenges we're facing when it comes to accessing uh healthy foods, but that is something that's that's very notable for us. Again, looking at the scale, the darker you are, usually the the worse you would be in terms of your food environment index. It's just something to have on our our radar is that it's becoming tougher and tougher for some of our community members to access those little, those local healthy food options. Uh to that end as well, being a a part of a college town, there are some metrics we're gonna find ourselves on pretty consistently, whether it be things like severe housing problems or housing insecurity. There are other things that Riley County has done actually pretty well on, which are whether it be long commute drives, driving alone. These are things that we've done really well on and continue to do very well in just offering different transportation options, as well as doing things like carpooling, trying to find uh walkable areas, like whether it be to school or to work. That's something Riley County has done, not perfectly, but. or to work. That's something Riley County has done, not perfectly, but that's done pretty well as compared to the state. To that end as well, with that severe housing cost burden that I was referencing, again, these numbers will often be high in a college town. But that's something that we still find ourselves in. That's when it comes to this HUD data that they use for severe housing problems, they're often looking at things like does fifty percent or more of your monthly income go to things like rent utilities? Do you have access to a kitchen? Do you have access to plumbing, indoor plumbing? Do you, are you subject to things like overcrowding in a house? These are, it's HUD data, again, fairly dated, but again, something that Riley County is consistently ranked pretty high and something that has been referenced in the past. And again, Douglas County is right there along with this. Some of this is just the natural consequence of being in a a county that has a high percentage of college students, but that's still not something that that we want to ignore and doing things like that housing inventory that twenty one school should did is super helpful and just kind of keeping tabs on current inventory and the current status of our our housing inventory. With this, there's not a lot to to note here. Most of our metrics in this area have been pretty consistent. It's been good to see that unemployment has still been low and has been consistent across the state. Likewise, things like injury deaths, Riley County has always performed very, very well, and it still continues to do so. Our childcare cost burden is still relatively high, higher than what you'd see across the state, but still pretty consistent across what you'd see nationally. Same thing is true with these community conditions. There's not a lot to note other than things like our school funding has still been pretty decent, all things considered. Likewise, our living wage is slightly lower here in the county of Riley than it would be across the state. Their rating would be forty two dollars and two cents for a living wage. It's usually a single parent household, the two is often how that data is is composed. So again, these numbers have been very, very good. There's always room for improvement for sure, but at least across the state, things have been looking quite well. Referencing some of that S T I data that we were looking at, it was fairly dated. This is actually more recent. This would have come from twenty twenty three. It was updated April last year. I'd expect new data to come out here in the next month or so. This is maintained by the K D H year against our health environment. What we're actually seeing is that some of that that rate that we've seen that really climbed during the pandemic is starting to tail off. So for us, we're looking at about six point one cases per one thousand population, which is a marked improvement from where we were even just a year ago. To look at where we find ourselves across the state, that six point one cases per one thousand would be putting us probably in that second twentieth percentile. So we'd be finding ourselves somewhere between sixty eight percent in in ranking across the the state. So this would be the highest rates, lowest rates, and each one of these is one of the one hundred and five counties in Kansas. Comparing to where we were even just a year prior, which was about nine point nine point oh cases per one thousand. So we've really cut our rates by about fifty percent over the span of a year, which is still there is room for improvement and it's something we're we're continually working on. But what we've seen is that we're finally kind of getting ourselves away from some of that that higher rankings and trying to find ourselves more in the middle of the faculty comes to the S T I rates. Again, being in a county health, or being in a county that has comprised of so many college students, it is tough sledding. But that's part of why we continue to do the work of things like that Title Ten grants, as much as work as it's taken for the clerk's office and for us, that money is pretty instrumental. And and hopefully lowering some of these rates and finding ways to to make S T I testing accessible for our population. Then lastly, just something to have on your radar. In the clinic, we've absorbed a few positions across the years. We had a clinic coordinator at one time. That position was absorbed roughly two years ago due to some budget constraints. And likewise, we find it, found ourselves pretty lean when it comes to things like, what would be medical billing, coding, credentialing, prior authorization, really just someone to serve as a liaison between the clinic and our private payers. Again, looking at some of the private payer data that we had, when it comes to things like S T I immunizations, we're working with more and more private payers, and that does just, it presents a challenge for us in terms of staff time, staff energy, whether it be reviewing claims, resubmitting claims. It just, it takes time, and that's something that we currently don't have and help to partner is someone who's who's able to do billing coding potentially like. And really just given the tenor of the situation when it comes to things like funding, federal funding challenges have presented a unique challenge for us. Again, when it comes to things like removal of our I A P supplemental three and four, those grants specifically weren't a part of our operating budget. Really what they were earmarked for at this point was trying to defray some of the C I P costs for E H R implementation. So the removal of that funding isn't necessarily a concern for us directly, but it does signal a shot across the bow that any federal funding is is being called into question right now. So finding ways for us to shore up our private pay, finding ways to shore up our private revenue, I think is a really good thing for us and we'll hope to hopefully weather any other challenges that we may have when it comes to things like federal funding, whether it be reduction or removal entirely. There's different options that you can consider, whether it be a billing service or in-house billing. I will say some of the billing that we do is pretty unique. There's not something you see across most private practices, whether it be things like working within our vaccines for children, Title Five, which is M C H, Title Ten, family planning, federal guidelines, our three forty B medication billing practices, things like early detection works, which is used for breast and cervical cancer screening or wise woman. These are all pretty bespoke programs and have like very unique billing requirements that most billing services may not have. There may be some out there that do, but at least in just conversations that we've had with local counties up to this time, there's not a lot of third party billing services that are being used. So this may necessitate, if you were to move forward with something like this, potentially creating a new position or finding a way to retool a position to do those things. And I know that's that's a tough time to be asking things like that, but it's something I want to put on your radar all the same, just something to to keep in mind.
This is a huge priority. I think Diane agrees, but this is huge because it's taking a lot of Jacob's bandwidth, way more than it should. Critically important, as we know, the transition we've gone through missed opportunities from money and funding, and so all new positions aren't always available. It's something I support, I think.
Yes.
Fully and or we've talked about a third party, but if third parties maybe can't do some specialized stuff, that'd be a concern, but commissioners, this is something that is, we're really missing out on. I can't say that we would recoup enough to pay for the position, but it it would help and it's taking too much of his bandwidth right now.
Now, the billing and co coding won't be, well, that is, wouldn't be under this new persons.
No, it's totally separate.
Yeah, it's separate.
Totally different thing. It's very complex. I just wanted to ask the board.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And again, no decision. I'm not asking for any kind of decision today. I just want to put this on your radar for the the situation we in which we find ourselves currently in, something that we'd like to at least explore the space of, like, whether it be reaching out to the counties, looking at things like physician descriptions, getting an idea of pay rates. That's something that we'd be happy to do if that's something he wants to do. And that concludes my talk. Again, just the short of it, we're seeing a lot of stability as well as increases in some of our service lines. Our county health data has been relatively stable. Has been trending in places that we'd love to see a trend positively, whether it be S T I rates, things like Medicare vaccination rates. We'll we'll keep you in the work that we do, but we could use some help when it comes to things like billing code specifically. You have any questions for me?
Would that be a full-time position or part-time, or what what do you envision on that?
It it depends on how you want to tool that position. There may be a possibility to make it part-time. It'd be tough to find someone who'd be willing to do that work part-time, but in theory, they could. I think there's other things you could do to basically build that position out, whether it be things like credentialing, maybe trying to build in things like prior authorization work as well. As we've done our contracting with Tricare West, specifically with Tricare Prime, which is their basically managed care aspect. There's a lot of things you have to do in terms of getting approval or authorization from the P C M to do things like immunizations, which can be just all the more challenging, but given our local population and even some of the challenges that we're currently seeing on post, that may be an opportunity to to serve the community if there are some changes there. Did you have any questions for me, whether it be measles? If you ever do, feel free to reach out, but we'll keep keep tabs on the measles outbreak, but so far, no cases in in Riley County, but it is something we're very concerned about and actively trending.
I've been reading a lot about measles thing coming up, but are there two, it seemed, and like that was way before the vaccinations. I had measles several times. But there was some, there was two different types of measles at the time. You know, there was a short version and a longer version, when, you know, many years ago, fifteen years ago, yeah, three days, ten, something. Is that not a thing, or do they change the names?
What we're seeing is that whether it be the the presentation of measles or something like this, the the case duration can vary pretty wild. Whether someone is immunized or not tends to be the the biggest change you'll see in like the the course, like the disease courses we may have with measles. Yeah, but the the vaccine we currently administer is an M M R vaccine. It contains inactive viruses for measles, mumps, rubella. Well, thank you for your time.
And if the board is okay and Brittany's okay, we could skip Brittany's. You got a long morning. If you have questions, you could ask her real quickly and then we can get Catherine. I just know you have a long one. It's whatever the board feels comfortable with. Sorry, Brittany, I know you're but if you have questions, feel free to ask Brittany or myself when we get you.
Escaped.
She's run out pretty quick.
Yeah, she, yeah, we changed her mind.
She's got plenty to do.
Need to make a motion and move that we recesses the Board of County Health and then reconvene as the Board of County Commission.
I was sick of that.
Been moved and seconded to recess as the Board of Health and reconvene as Board of County Commissioners, all in favor.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Catherine Hensler, Director of the Riley County Historic Museum. Coming to you with our April, or excuse me, our March report, staff update and statistical update. As we look at visitation and tours, you'll notice March was a great month for us. We had higher visitation and outreach numbers than we did last year under the same month as well as higher than February. So I'm very pleased with that. We'll continue engaging with the community, encouraging people to come out and see the new exhibit and visit the historic sites, properties and museums. We will be opening the Pioneer Log Cabin on April twenty seventh for the season, so that will increase our numbers as well, but overall, very pleased with our numbers since our reopen in February. Volunteer hours, however, were down a little bit, both from last year at this time and the month of February. Nothing, I think, to be concerned of, just based upon everybody's schedules. I won't go through all of the education and outreach. It is all outlined on the report here, but if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We are going into our field trip season that will start next week, and it'll last until the first week of May. All of these field trips are held down at the Wolf House, and I think last year our numbers were five hundred and thirty two students came through. We already have higher numbers than that signed up and all of our spots are full. So we're excited for higher numbers, but that also means more volunteers, more work and exhaustion. That's a lot of time to spend with fourth graders. And I have to say, I am very blessed to have Melanie Highsmith on our team. She is just fabulous with children, which means I get to stay up at the museum. But we look forward to another wonder. Pardon?
Patience is a virtue.
Yes, and she has an unlimited source, so bless her. But we are very excited for that program to kick off. We do still have two shifts that we need to find volunteers to fill, so we'll continue to recruit. If those don't get filled, I usually go down and fill those. So we will still make sure that the programs continue. As far as collections, I do want to remind you that we've been under a collections moratorium since May eighth of twenty twenty five. That will end on May twenty first of this year. So the process for determining the new intakes will be approved this afternoon by the collections committee at their quarterly meeting. We are proposing a similar process to communication that we were using during the moratorium. So what we have on our website explains the criteria for our collection. We also did offer the exception, if there were any exceptional objects that somebody needed to donate during this moratorium, we would have a conversation with them and what that led to were actually really great conversations with our patrons and our donors. We were able to explain a lot to them about how collections work, what our criteria is and asking some of those pressing questions. So instead of the old way of accepting collections was just go ahead and bring in seven boxes of all of your old stuff. We'll get to it eventually. That's why we have forty years of backlog. So we really want to prevent that moving forward. What we'll be doing is we will still include the messaging on our website. We will include the criteria on our website. We will not allow drop offs anymore. That's just completely out of the question. Everything will have to be communicated with either myself or a curator of collections, in which case we will have those same conversations that we did with donors during the moratorium to ask, is this really essential to telling the history of Riley County? If we have a no answer on the phone, then we've prevented seven boxes showing up at the museum that require us to go through. And if we have that conversation with the donor and it's approved, then we will make an appointment with them for drop off. So we will know when they're coming, what they're dropping off, kind of the scope of not just what's in the donation, but also the number of boxes. That will also help us plan for future donations. So we will not be allowing drop offs. Everything will be coordinated with us and we'll have a chance to talk to the donor. So that's what we will be proposing to the collections committee this afternoon. They, of course, will have to approve that and they'll have to make that recommendation to the society board in May. Society board will not meet until after the moratorium ends. So based upon the conversation this afternoon with the collections committee is how we'll proceed on day first, but we will need to get the approval from the board as well. That's a big step for us. We have never done this before. It is also not included in our collections management policy, which is up for review this year. We do that every three years. We will be looking to include the moratorium language in our policy going forward, and of course, that will have to be approved by the board, then the trustees, and then it will come to you for review. I would also like to note, we are going through all of our forms. That includes donation forms. It includes the library and use fees. It includes outside agencies requesting to use photographs that the museum owns. We have not updated these forms since as I back, I'm seeing nineteen eighty nine, or excuse me, nineteen ninety eight on some of these forms. They've not been updated since then. We really need to do our due diligence as an institution. We should be reviewing them every three to five years. So that is a project we're working on this year. And while we may not choose to change everything, there will be some updates. Technology has improved greatly even just in the last five years. So we need to incorporate that into some of our forums. Those, of course, will go through the collections committee, go through the board, go through the trustees. We will want to run those through our county councillor's office, and then we will present them to you as well. Collection numbers. Excuse me. We are still, of course, under the moratorium, so we're trying to limit the number of objects coming in. We did have twenty that came in in March of this year, but we also were able to process eight backlog, so trying to keep up with the flow. As far as archives and library, curator Ference has continued cleaning up and organizing the library and archival spaces. We are now on a very large scale review of all the books that are in the library. Those are, those include collection items, but also include the reference collection. We have identified thirty two hundred books that are currently housed in that library. We are going through with the collections committee one by one and determining whether or not they are suitable for our collection and for our collections criteria. To date, and we started this on the first Monday of March, we meet every Monday. We have identified nine hundred and six books that do not meet our collections criteria and should not be in our institution. So those will be presented this afternoon as well to our collections committee. They'll make the decision to recommend their deaccession to the board, and we will proceed from there. There is always a chance that their committee will not agree with us and also a chance that the board will not agree with us. We cannot deaccession anything until we go through all of those proper channels. When, when and if we deaccession When, when and if we deaccession those objects, we'll first offer them to other institutions who could benefit from their use. If they say no, thank you, then we basically need a minute's storage at this time until there's a solution for what to do with them. We are also cleaning out all of the card catalogs. We have card catalogs and thousands of cards that are retaining information, but what we're finding is those are duplications of things that are in our electronic database. Therefore, we would not need to keep physical cards in card catalogs. So we are having our museum assistants go through each card one by one, verifying that it's in our database. If it's not, it's being added and verified that we still have it in our collection. If it is in the database already, we just check to make sure the information's accurate and the cards can be disposed of. That furniture is also then being transferred to based upon ownership. It belongs to the county. It's being offered back to the county to another department or going into surplus. If it belongs to the Historical Society, it's going into storage. And they'll make a decision on it as an institution on what to do with it. You'll also see visitation and interaction with the public in the month of March of this year has been very busy compared to this time or the past few months. We have had fifty-two interactions with the community this month and thirty-six of them have been research requests, sixteen have been in-person appointments. And I will note, this is not typical for most months, but we've been partnering with Manhattan High and their students have been coming in doing history projects, and we're one of the partners that helps with the the research component. Building and grounds as well as staffing, I have no major updates to report concerning the Historical Society. I've been mentioning this for quite some time. They are trying to fill their administrator position, got a couple processes, or excuse me, holdups with processing. But we are right on the edge of being the hire of the new candidate. Hopefully, we'll have somebody that's ready to hire or ready to start at least by April twenty-eighth, but I will keep you posted on that decision. The Society is also looking to hire a second position. It will likely be on contract and it'll be somebody that can manage their historic sites. As you know, they have multiple historic properties that do not belong to the county that our staff has been managing for years. We want to get away from that, not that we don't care about those sites. We care very much. I will stay on as an advisor for all preservation activities. However, they do need to manage the day-to-day operations on their own and manage their own contracts. That's not a county responsibility. I won't go through all of the upcoming events, but I would like to invite you to any or all of them. We do have a lot going on this spring. We are introducing a number of new programs this year and we really do hope to increase our community outreach and just our visibility in the community. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. You do as well.
Mistress. I prepared. Anybody can pick the one that they desire. Lost everyone. Almost everyone, Commissioner McKinley, sorry. I don't drink a lot of coffee. There's time for everyone to convert, so. Especially this time of year. Oh, you. You're talking about you. I thought you were talking about the board. Sorry, I was gonna say, I didn't know the board had anything else. We got an agenda violation manifest. Okay, thank you. Okay, follow on you. Sorry. Go ahead and drink some.
Oh, shoot.
Remember Mike Russell did Monday.
Just with Mike with the winter's over and Russell with the on the fires.
Can we adjust the end time for this first?
Oh, I probably haven't seen. Thanks for asking that. That was my next question. Starting light.
What? Get her back in, see which, what executive we're wanting to do. What's your thoughts?
I thought we already decided we're gonna have some time to speak with said employee and then
later.
You know, reaching this, what we have to go through first and then base second.
Well, I guess it depends on. Okay, well, I think it's.
That's what I thought, but I know there are multiple schedule for me, so. We're gonna go thirty minutes, I guess.
I don't know. Do we need thirty?
You don't have to go thirty.
Get back to schedule something.
Are you gonna do it? Go ahead.
Oh, I can. Yeah, I'll move that the County Commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford recess into executive session on a performance matter of non-elected personnel and exception to the Kansas Hook Meetings Act. For the purpose of discussing the work conduct of the employee and to protect the privacy of the employee, the open meeting to resume in the County Commission Chamber at eleven-thirty a.m.
I would second that.
Renewed and seconded, the County Commission to recess into executive session for reasons previously stated. And a performance matter of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Hook Meeting Act. All in favor?
Aye.
Here we go.
Oh, I thought you said all set.
Yep, the meeting is live.
Okay, I move the board of county commissioners come out of executive session.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded for the board of county commissioners come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye. I move the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then we're gonna go back ten more minutes to the same.
Yeah, we need ten, Vivian.
Ten or fifteen.
We need ten, ten more minutes.
Ten's ten, okay.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and move that the county commissioners, including Chairman McMillan, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford recess into executive session on a performance matter of non-elected personnel and exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing the work conduct of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee with the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at eleven forty a.m.
Be eleven forty-two.
No.
Do you want?
Eleven forty-five.
Eleven forty minutes.
Okay, I would second that.
Been moved and seconded for the county commission to recess into executive session for reason reasons previously stated under the performance matter of non-elected personnel exception, the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor?
Aye. Okay, I make a motion that all the county commissioners come out of the executive session.
I'll second that.
And moved and seconded for the board of county commissioners come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
I move the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I'll second that.
And moved and seconded, the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna go with option three, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I'll study it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we typically don't list it, just so it's just not known by the board.
Yeah, yeah. I place a call and make sure Elizabeth.
I'm just doing.
How long do you think we need?
Thirty.
Thirty?
I'm gonna go with thirty, it seemed, it needs to be like thirty.
Yeah. I'm gonna squeeze followers.
Okay, I'm gonna move that the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford, with Bryant Parker, county counselor. I don't think we need Jacob. No, okay. Counselor for the commission, Elizabeth Ward, human resource director and Rich Fargo County clerk. Recession to executive session on a performance matter of non-elected personnel and exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing the work conduct of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee in the open meeting to resume in the commission chamber at twelve twenty p.m.
I would second that.
Yeah.
Been moved and seconded for the county commission to recess into executive session for rea- reasons previously stated under the performance matter of non-elected personnel, exception to the Kansas Open Meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
I guess it's just us.
Yep.
You're back on to discuss what?
Personnel.
Okay.
Okay, I move the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session.
Second that.
We moved in second to the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye. I move the record reflect action shall be taken and consistent with the consensus reached in our executive session.
Second that.
Moved in second to the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive section, all in favor?
Aye.
So try to do this on good here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I'll move the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford, recess into Executive Session on a performance matter of non-elected personnel and exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. For purpose of discussing work conduct of an employee and or employees and to protect the privacy of said employee or employees in the open meeting to resume in the County Commission Chamber at 12:35 PM.
I'm the second. I would second that.
We moved and seconded for the county commission to recess into executive session for reasons previously stated, the performance matter of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, now you're ready. Now you're ready.
Okay, I make a motion that Board of County Commissioners come out of executive session.
I'll second.
We moved and seconded the board come out of exec, come out of executive session, all in favor.
Aye. Aye. I make motion that, or I move the record reflect action shall be taken.
Yeah.
Um, consistent with the consensus reached in the executive session.
I'll second.
We moved in second the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in the executive session, all in favor.
Aye.
I think we've got to put some filters or something. I, cameras don't make me look very well, Derek. Put some A I. in there, that youth sixteen again filter. I don't know if I want to go that young, but. Oh. Boy, you're on a roll today.
Okay.
What I do to you.
Time to go home.
I'd say for me, Commissioner Ford.
Yeah.
It's all right. I'm just asking if you can Photoshop hair, but she, but I guess that's not. It's been a long time.
I think mine. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we adjourn the April tenth meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
We moved and seconded.